Last night, when we were talking about the overall vision, a couple of you all mentioned the importance of the existing neighborhoods. And that's something that the committees had a lot of focus on. Certainly, we, from the staff and consultant standpoint, into the thriving neighborhoods is really critical to the future of this community. The graphic that you see here for thriving neighborhoods, again, the graphic is intended to be just sort of conceptual. And so we've got sort of bubbles of yellow where we're saying, these are neighborhoods. We want to kind of get across the idea that we want them to be thriving neighborhoods well into the future. I realize that not every neighborhood in town is covered by a yellow bubble here and that there are people who are living in other parts of the town as well. While we might want to refine that a little before we finish up the thing, we're really not trying to show every single spot of residential, but really to get across the idea that there are big chunks of the city that have neighborhoods and that we need to be paying attention to their future. So our targets in this big move, as you see here, maintaining the relevance and maintaining the property values in these existing neighborhoods, developing strategies so that there is reinvestment in the residential properties and that people are keeping up their homes in these neighborhoods. And thirdly, creating a group of neighborhood leaders who will help with this as well. And I'll say that I think that is really also a very important point for you all because, once again, many of the choices in neighborhoods are not choices of investments the city makes, but they're choices that homeowners make. And so that's, I think, a really important part of the connection here. Now, going to why is this an important move? Obviously, you have much of the area of Lewisville is developed now. Much of the residential housing stock that will be here when you celebrate that 100th anniversary in 2025, it's housing that's already here. It's neighborhoods that are already in place and on the ground. So for this city to remain thriving, it's really important that those neighborhoods remain desirable. And one of the lessons that you can see from some of the closer-in suburbs in this region is as they get older, people think, well, shall I reinvest in my house or shall I go out and buy a new house further out somewhere? And part of that choice has to do with how do they feel about that neighborhood as a place to live in the future? And that gets to what are the other neighbors doing in my neighborhood? What's the city doing in terms of keeping up the streets and the sidewalks and the parks and so forth? How do I feel about the identity? Do I feel a connection there? Do I have the right choices for myself? Those things go into what somebody thinks about when they decide to invest. And so the city has a role to play in making sure that these neighborhoods can stay competitive and so that the homeowners will choose to make their own reinvestments to keep up those homes and neighborhoods. So we think the city should be proactive in addressing some of the issues that come into play in aging neighborhoods. And so you see several of those listed in that second point there. Part of this is the sort of broken window syndrome idea that, you know, certain small things start to give people the message that maybe this isn't going to be a great place 10, 5, 10 years from now. So we need to take action early so that we don't have those things start to happening, to happen. Also, it's important that we want to keep the people who've been here a long time as residents, keep them involved and engaged. And having these as visitor perceptions when someone comes up to visit someone who lives in Lewisville, we want them to think, oh, that looks like a nice neighborhood. It looks like a good community to be part of. So all of those go back to the idea of making sure that the existing neighborhoods are still places that people choose when they're thinking about moving or when they're thinking about reinvesting in an existing home. We have, let's see, seven action priorities for this one. So let me go through those quickly and then we'll get into that discussion. The first recommendation here is creating neighborhood-specific reinvestment strategies. And the idea that you see here is one that's been used in a number of different cities. Wendy at Chris and Nichols has done work like this in places like Farmer's Branch, for example. And basically, the idea is to say, take a look at the neighborhoods and say, these neighborhoods, they're in great shape now. We want to just concentrate on preserving that, making sure that it stays really good and desirable. Second might be what you might think of as conservation, where most of it's okay, but it needs some assistance and it needs some repairs or some upgrades or that kind of thing. And rehabilitation, where there's really been a lot of decline and some kind of a bigger strategy or a bigger kind of reinvestment or even perhaps a reuse is needed. And so the idea is that each of those kinds of neighborhoods, there are different strategies that make sense. So the first thing is to think about a way to develop strategies that are appropriate in each of those different kinds of neighborhoods. And to do that, you need to know which ones are where within the community. That goes to recommendations that have come from a couple of different directions. One, the Neighborhood Preservation Committee recommendations. And then secondly, the Formal Neighborhood Enhancement Program. These are all recommendations where there are other folks in the room that can elaborate on exactly what you've already done and what's in process. But part of this is gathering the information to help you figure out the condition of those existing neighborhoods and help to understand where improvements or reinvestment is needed and which things the city can be doing to help the neighborhoods. One of the points that you see underneath number two is the idea of a formal network of neighborhoods. And I know in newer communities, you've got homeowners associations that tend to be very active and pay a lot of attention to making sure that everybody's keeping up things. You heard Chris yesterday talking about how that works in Castle Hills. In a lot of neighborhoods that were built post-World War II, there weren't those associations created to start with. And so there isn't necessarily that kind of institution or identity. And so in some communities are thinking about, you know, how are there, are there ways that we can start having some neighborhood association? Not necessarily a homeowners association, but just more for the neighborhood to work together. And in addition, I've seen real good success with the idea of this neighborhood network where neighborhood leaders in one part of town can assist and advise the neighborhood leaders in another part of town. So that's an idea that we think is valuable as part of bringing everybody's resources and knowledge and enthusiasm to bear on those existing neighborhoods. This Neighborhood Enhancement Program goes for a couple of slides because there are a lot of subbullets that go into this one. A Neighborhood Matching Grant Program, incentives for owners and developers so that you can encourage them to reinvest in their facilities. A tax rebate program for investment. Other communities, Richardson, for one, has had success with programs like that where, you know, you're giving them some assistance, but in turn, that means that that neighborhood is going to be staying up, staying that quality. Neighborhood identity goes along with what I was just talking about in terms of neighborhoods. The Board of Realtors may be a good connection or partner to identify what some of the concerns are in particular parts of town to figure out how to address those. And then this is, I think, the last slide on this one action bullet, empowering the organizations, working with the neighborhoods, creating names for neighborhoods where there isn't an identity now, using tools to connect neighborhoods and helping with programs to assist folks. Again, there are programs and examples like this in other communities. Basically, the city's role is to help make the connections, help get the neighborhood folks together with each other, help to be the bridge sometimes between the neighbors and private businesses. Home Depot, for instance, has programs like this, but sometimes it takes somebody to kind of get it started. So those are things that are all part of the idea of enhancing those existing neighborhoods. Number three, looking at targeted strategies for places where there are homes with significant problems, significant need for a different kind of investment. Continuing multifamily inspection programs, which is existing, continuing to do that. Looking at a program for improvement or redevelopment of aging multifamily communities. Many cities in our region have got apartment complexes that are, you know, post-World War II, '60s, '70s-ish, that really have not been kept up in our kind of pasted useful life. And so there needs to be some thought about how to encourage the owners who may have now, by now, recouped their investment to help make it easier for them to do something different or to reinvest or even to construct some new kind of residential. Implementing a hotel motel inspection program. This is one of the things that I think the committees felt was an important component of this. And then finally, working with the neighborhood groups to look at improvements like screening walls so that there's a way to address those kinds of those improvements, those repairs, but that it's not just something that's coming back to the city, but rather than getting the neighborhoods involved and looking at some other, some kinds of funding for those improvements. So there's a lot, there's a lot of specifics underneath these bullets, especially that big bullet, number two. But all of these things in this big move are really intended to make sure that the places where people live today, that the current residents live, will still be desirable and vital in 2025. So with that, let me open it up for questions. As I say, I know there's several staff people who will have background information as we want that and need that. What are your thoughts on thriving neighborhoods?
So Julie, can you hear me?
I can, well, if you keep it up there, I can't.
So first thing is, we do have a hotel motel inspection program. We've talked about amortizing zoning. We don't?
No, we've talked about it every three past year, but we have not.
Donna?
So we haven't implemented it?
No, we've talked about it, you're right.
Okay, we talked about it. We've talked about amortizing zoning, and it's a long-range process. And I think one thing that bothers me is we've talked about it. Now, we've got two we've talked about. We've talked about it, but we haven't really done anything further with it. And given that it's a long-range type activity, I think it's something that we need to look at starting as soon as possible. And so, for example, with some of these old, you know, pre-World War II apartment buildings and so forth, little quadplexes and whatnot, to have recouped their value, maybe that's something to look at, not just the junkyards down on 121. And obviously, it's very, it's a legally complex issue, and I recognize that. But again, if you don't get started on it now, 25 years from now, you're not going to get there. I like the idea of working with Board of Realtors. I was going to ask, Cleve, you all adopted the Farmer's Branch approach to zone, to code enforcement issues, correct? Do you want to comment on that? I mean, you've had a year roughly of doing it right.
Let me, yeah. Yeah, a lot of the programs that we're talking about under this big move are ones that Cleve has either been investigating or is doing or what have you. So go ahead.
I'm one to use the microphone. If you can't hear me, just tell me to raise the microphone. In regards to that particular program, we did adopt it in concept. Talked with code enforcement about how we were going to make that approach. And that had to do a lot with New World because it's GIS-based and we could work that through and put that data in and be able to use it and read it appropriately. In fact, I was discussing with Jason last night about when we get New World, it's going to be a really powerful tool. Having said that, we made a decision in code enforcement to start mapping, start mapping now. And so it's kind of a rudimentary mapping process, but we do have a map that we can highlight and show violations, the condition of the properties. And we have the Northwest Quadrants where we started the area in purple to the west of I-35 on that violations map, all the way down to almost the 407. We've kind of trained everybody, realizing that those areas aren't in really need of blight or potential blight or need any kind of significant improvements, but just getting that training aspect, you know, how we're going to go through and impact that process. So it is currently in play, but we haven't had a chance to put it into full development because of the assumptions.
So it's under way, but you still have a way before you can really answer the question of how is it going. Wendy, I know you were involved in that program in Farmer's Branch. Do you want to add anything more to that comment about how that works out and how that relates to the issues?
Yeah, I think Cleve's got a real good understanding of this. We actually talked about it earlier. That process and that mapping, I think, is going to be really important. So I'll be very excited for you all to get the resources and the software to be able to do that because I've been able to see Farmer's Branch, and that's one example, but how they identify which one of those properties need the most help and then being able to look, we just actually did an assessment for them 10 years later to go back and track and see the improvement on that is really substantial. I mean, it's really powerful to go back and see that. I think he knows what to do and it's just a matter of getting the resources to do that. I think you all are a perfect fit for that type of process.
Other comments and questions? Discussion?
Just one other comment. Is anybody seeing the microphone? So the one other comment I was going to put out there is that in Carrollton, they have implemented a pretty high standard for quality in apartment, new apartment construction, which has cut down on apartments that 10 years from now start to look really sad. And I think that's something that we should also be looking at is you can't, you know, we get a lot of complaints from people saying, why are you building a purpose well? Well, because it's been zoned for 10 years or more and the zoning has actually added value to the land because it's hard to get multifamily approved, you know, through the council at this point. We're not interested. And they're playing that out there. But, you know, what the product that goes on that land, again, looking at Carrollton's solution to make sure that's a really high-quality product, they essentially established a set of construction codes that demand that normal or cheap apartments go up. You can't do it. And I think it's a great idea.
I think that's a really good idea too. Hold that thought because we'll get into that on the next big move about new neighborhoods. That's where that one comes in. What are other thoughts from others of you on the thriving neighborhoods?
Two bullets to maybe have and add to the discussion. Two things to add to the discussion on that a little bit further. How's that, that category?
We can hear you.
Pocket parks as a way to revitalize and actually kind of tie it into that extending the green space. So if we do have a property that's just unrecoverable, now, I understand that it comes with its own set of costs and its own, but that may be the one thing that creates a neighborhood.
That and community gardens.
Yeah, yeah. So just a thought, it's part of the conversation. And the other thing is maybe, and I, you know, this has a legislative barrier at the state level that might lead the community to go talk to those folks as a property assistance clean energy or a ACE program. I think that would be another way that we could leverage state options at the local level to get people to reinvest in their properties.
Which is something that Cleve is talking about. Yeah, we heard that from the Resource Management Committee. I know, Bob, that you all talked about that as well as in the talk.
Thank you.
Okay. Greenwood, ready? You're fine? Okay.
Couple of things I'd like to see us do that I think really give us a big bang for the buck. Happened over at Old Penn, I think we have some other places. We do have a couple, not in an angle, but we do have a couple of older apartment units that I think we could go in and if we went out and searched developers, they're doing it in other communities around the apartments that's doing it. Some other cities are doing it for, they're taking some of the older developments totally straight and real, basically, putting up newer developments. Now, some of those are even, what do you call it? What's the word? Not income assisted, I guess you could say. But the apartments that I'm thinking about now are in that what?
Like the Housing Finance Corporation.
Some of those, I think if you totally got rid of those, there are two I'm thinking of right now, totally different areas in town. But those areas, those neighborhoods want something like that. So the Dunwoy would rebuild, would just lift that up and slap it going into a neighborhood and put any random streets. And that's something the city can do. And then what that does is spurs the other development and private people to come into it.
And we have done that in the past. Been a number of years with the House of Minutes.
Two that are crying for that right now.
Donna, do you want to elaborate on that one? And also, if you wanted to add any more comments on the hotel motel program?
I'll go with the motel first. We did talk about that at the last year's retreat. We have not implemented. We had some discussion with the hoteliers and some concerns with the hoteliers. So if that's a council priority, we would need to go back and look at that. And you might ask, why isn't it here in thriving neighborhoods? It's here because some of the hotels, I don't want to use that word loosely, but I thought you have people living in those hotels, do have very negative impacts on the neighborhoods. And Chief Kerbo can talk about that in more details and what impacts we've seen.
He looks like a bobblehead back there.
Yeah. He's got his bob in your tan, I feel it. Some of the cities that have put in place more aggressive programs have met with legal challenges. And that is something we've stepped back to, read that to, and monitored. We'd like to see how they, looking at, of course, my city attorney.
She stepped out from the job.
She stepped, she ran away.
You can say whatever you like now.
But seeing how those cities deal with those legal challenges is one reason that we had put that program on hold just to monitor. But it is important and they are having very negative impacts in some of our neighborhoods. The mayor's comment about flip the properties, which is something we did in the early '90s with that Housing Finance Corporation, really gets into using state credits to be able to incentivize private sector to come in and purchase those properties. And basically, bonds are sold and the rent goes to pay for the debt. That is done for rent restricted type properties. That's the word I'm looking for, Eric. Moderate, not moderate income, but protect, not lower income, but.
Low to moderate.
Low to moderate, yeah, income. There's another word that's not coming to mind. That's close. But that's how those programs work and it has been this way in the past.
Another thing to consider, I know a project that I've been involved with in Richardson where they've got some of those issues with older apartment complexes is that they did a study of that corridor and looked at the market opportunities for things other than residential there. And they were able to identify some places where the apartment owners had really, you know, more than recouped their investment by opening it up to change the zoning for some other kinds of activities. The owners were then able to have some new market opportunities that they didn't have before. That seems to be very promising for what they're trying to do on that too.
Okay, Wendy, one, just one quick add. I think exactly, Mayor, what you're talking about is exactly what that first strategy was intended to, let's identify those. And you may even have the rehabilitation, but you may even have a fourth category. But that's exactly what that's talking about, is to identify that. And then you've got those specific strategies to go after those identified areas.
Any other staff who are missing any background comments?
One quick add is the tools you have approved recently made an impact. One, the NPC recommendations that did go through, and these are huge in the field to make a difference, were garage enclosures ordinance that was passed a year or so ago. We had single-family rental improvements that was done in May 6th, 2013. Again, another rental property action where you adopted the 2012 International Property Maintenance Code, which helped our fences and a lot of accidents going on with that right now. The accessory buildings has been a huge ordinance that Cleve, when Cleve took over, code enforcement was actually shifted over to building inspection where the building inspectors could be married to the code officers and they work together. We're working a lot of cases right now on accessory buildings. Some of those were grandfathered, but a lot of them weren't. They were in bad shape. A lot have come down and people are rebuilding. So those are the types of things that y'all have done in the past that made huge impacts of where we've been and of course, where we can still go.
Well, speaking to that, where we can still go, I think there were several items that were recommended by that committee that have not been acted upon.
That is true, yeah.
And there's some of your strategies up here for our homeowner tax incentive programs, partnerships through Lowe's and Home Depot, those types of things that we can definitely go down that road.
Yeah, so those, I think, as we, you know, remember this, this item number two has several of these. The matching grant program that you see there, for example, would be one of those. So what this bullet is speaking to is go ahead and keep going, complete those recommendations that you've already been working on.
Items of recommendations? There's several. They've got the whole list. Some of them count, but I was not taking action on them. Some of them we just haven't really played with yet. I'd like to see us revisit that whole list of recommendations.
And we did in this process, Mayor. And I believe just about everything that has not been implemented is in this list.
I think they all heard it.
Okay. Okay, so in terms of the direction on thriving neighborhoods, what I'm hearing from you all is the support for this as a big move. It sounds like most of the comments that we're hearing are ones to support these kinds of actions and say, go for it. I'm hearing a bit stronger action in terms of following up and reviewing those earlier recommendations, getting back onto the hotel motel inspection and support for the other activities that are indicated as priorities in this area. Is that a fair assessment? Are there other refinements that you all want to do?
I think I have one question that I can't agree more. Continuing going with the tools that we implemented recently and look forward to the additional ones. I mean, I think this is one of our biggest big moves. Like we talked about a little bit last night, this is just huge. And I do have a question, possibly a touchy subject that we've been dealing with for years. I don't know if there's an update or if there's anything else we can do. Maybe your rental program things that you were talking about that addresses this. But it still appears that we have a large problem with multiple families living in single-family residential. And I know we've had a hard time. It's almost impossible to enforce single families living in single-family residential. Is there any improvements? Is there anything else that we can, that we can do to enforce that?
The Never the Resurrection Committee did look at that and there was nothing conclusive at that time. Years ago, there was occupancy limits for residential youth, for residential houses. Didn't matter if you were related or not, it was just occupancy load of that house. They took them out in '06, I believe. We've noticed they've put some tools back in the 2012 codes about occupancy levels in houses for residential units. It really doesn't speak to who it is, it's just an occupancy limit. So that's not going to get us there really because if you're a Super Bowl party or anything else, you know, it's an occupancy limit at the time. Burden of proof of who, people who reside there is on the city. We knock on your door and say, hey, we thank you, blah, blah, blah. You can say, prove it, shut the door. We're at odds in trying to prove that. We have, again, strengthened our single-family rental to register those rental units. And right now, Cleve, you have 3,004 roughly registered units in the city. We think there's probably about 40, 100 units. We have a chart that shows the violations. But we are cracking down on the parking in the yards. They do register the number of people and who they are when they register. So we are kind of strengthening that. If you don't register, remember, y'all, pass the limit by which you put the $50 up as a deposit if you don't get your inspection and we're charging. So that's been a big incentive to get that information. So I think, I guess, in six months, we can come back and kind of give you a report of what we're seeing on the occupancy limits of houses, especially the rental ones. One thing I would point out that is something that the committee's brought about and we're excited to try to look at doing. I don't know how or the resources yet. But going back to these Lakeland Terrace, Westwood 1, Westwood 2, Bellar Heights, Serendipity Village, going into those neighborhoods, this came out of the committees and tried to do an informal grouping of those neighborhoods, maybe on an HOA, if they have one that we can strengthen, go in there with staff support and try to formalize these neighborhoods. We're already doing it right now in our water, sewer, streets and drainage capital programs. We have a neighborhood meeting. The attendance to those, Dave will tell you, has been rather high. They turned out for those and we hear other things. high. They turn out for those, and we hear other things, other than what contracts are going to do. We think we can make an attempt with 2025 to go into those neighborhoods, and there's several of them out there that are, I think, primed to group up. You may not get 60% participation, but if you get 20 or 30 and let it grow, and as the mayor said, once another subdivision sees their little area taken off, and hey, they put the top street topper signs, or they didn't adopt the spot that key entries to their subdivision, it may catch. Some things we used to do with PD, I think we need to get back doing, was the cookouts. It was white made of that, but a neighborhood party was huge. We used to do it with the enforcement team that would go out on a Wednesday or Thursday night, free hot dogs, and once people found out they weren't there to beat them up, they came out. And we had, at the time, we had code enforcement, animal services, PD, fire, PALS, everybody was there, and it was gathering in the street, again, neighborhood wise. So that was a big thing in the committees about thriving neighborhoods, reinvesting, get them going, and at least try. So I like that.
That is a lot.
I think that's a great thing. I'd like to put back that was the biggest thing it did, was introduce neighbors to each other. They wasn't out there, like, oh, what's going on, something like, you said once they turned out to work, they weren't there to arrest anybody. But they're in the street, it's a people's, they do house and gym, that's pretty good. And once they got to know each other, then I think it was great.
And that pays off dividends from all these other areas, because then there's more of a sense of identity, people are willing to help each other out, there's more idea, yeah, this is the place I want to stay, and we invest rather than pick up and move to somewhere.
Cleve and Eric have already really begun researching that program and looking at model programs, not only in the marketplace, but across the nation, and that is likely something you'll see in the budget and program this year.
To me, though, here, the best thing I've seen to combat that situation, if you're talking about gray is, when you go in and redevelop a property, that property next to it, the value of that property increases. You go in to tear down an apartment complex, put up a bigger complex, burn out, build all those single-family houses there, that property's rent is going to instantly increase in value, and then the landlords of those places are going to want more for their money, those people can't afford that, and they're moving out, and that's really great as well. We invest, it's basically just money.
Yeah, it really helps the market take action on those things.
Well, one of the things, too, from the very beginning, just talking about the city, continuing to reinvest into some of these old neighborhoods, one thing mentioned earlier was the credit improvements.
Right.
That's great, Deb.
There you go.
But it's not cheap.
It's not cheap, but you know, if you say, this is one of our big moves, this is one of our priorities, then when you come back to the budget and those things, and then I think that's where the staff sees this going, is to say, okay, this is what you said was the priority, here's what we're looking at, you know, how much do you want to buy off this year? Other comments on thriving neighborhoods? I think we're in good agreement on this one. Steve, anything? TJ?
No, I've talked to the staff about different tools and ideas, too.
Okay, all right. Well, in that case, let me turn over to Donna, because we're about to our lunch break.
Mayor, we do have reservations at the Mexican food restaurant that's over in Castle Hills, over here in Castle Hills, and we do need to adjourn me, and then we'll come back after the break. We have called ahead, and they have tables, anyone that wants to join us, they should have room in the restaurant.
Okay, so where they have Curry, is it now we even got one second?
We have a man.
Okay.
I should have said that. We have a man. And Eric is the driver, if you want to...
I'm driving, moving car to her.
You choose to say no brakes. Mr. Barris is driving.
Same driver as yesterday? Get your partner to move out to neighborhood revitalization or...
We can go back.
We can go back.
Let's go back to just the, what was it called?
You meant, that was it.
No, not the neighborhood, thriving neighborhood.
Thriving neighborhood.
Going over here, we're talking about...
The action.
Yeah. Back there, back one.
This one?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Kind of like this, Chief Kerbo, and Cleve, you might have Cleve, a little bit, or expand on that a little bit, and give us your thoughts and opinion on that. We won't be there, we got all the crowds.
Yeah, certainly. You know, this is one, the big move that I really like the most is the thriving neighborhoods, because that's one of the things we want to see, is residents may have the perception that they're safe, and they feel safe, and typically have less crime as a result of that. It's one of the big reasons we want to partner with code enforcement, if you remember the Crime Control Provision District tax, we hired a couple of code enforcement officers out of that taxing amount, those building inspectors, and have been partnering with police folks, as well as having our patrol guys keep an eye out for the common code enforcement violations, and making sure that we work together on those things that we can work together on and mutually benefit each other. I think that's already panning out to be a pretty successful program, especially as they build a database, it'll be huge for us. So anything that we can see that helps improve the quality of the properties in those neighborhoods, and it'll be less crime. So we're big supporters of that feeling.
What would it take to first get back to the verb where we're having, what it calls death, please?
Yeah, we only discontinued the cookouts, so we have a little bit more time to focus on the code enforcement parts. You know, we started with the Neighborhood Resource Officers doing that, and they're short a guy right now. And so we discontinued the cookouts, we did about 6 a year on average, and we kind of discontinued that so they could focus more on the code enforcement violations and help code out to get their two good guys on. So we'd be happy to, you know...
To go back to that, or write that again.
Go back to that, or maybe even modify that to more neighborhood meeting. I've already talked to Ms. Barrett about the possibility of funding in next year's Crime Control Provision District, some, basically funding some grants for us to work more in neighborhoods and do lots of things that could help enhance our neighborhoods and make it a little bit safer.
And that's one of the first, it had to be the cookouts or something like that, if you, I thought that worked really well.
Absolutely. And we're also considering those are virtual neighborhoods, you know, we're starting to work on having next-door neighborhoods, which is basically an internet-based thing on your neighborhood, and only people who live there are invited to participate in that, and we'll probably have better participation among our neighborhoods, because people can actually contribute information, tips, and such. We're rolling out the tip 411 and extra 911s coming online. So we're trying to tap into that virtual neighborhood that's out there, too.
Others?
Well, anytime neighborhoods start to run down, we obviously are going to see call volume go up in our business. So anytime we can revitalize these neighborhoods and keep them, and well taken care of, it's going to reduce our costs. So obviously, we're on board with the police department as far as, as anything we can do to revitalize neighborhoods and keep them up, and code enforcement going in and cleaning these places up, it's just going to reduce what we do. So we'll see a difference, no doubt.
Jim, you want to talk about, we had those pig dicks before, I think our department clown program, as you said.
Yes, obviously, when they did the pig dicks, our, and that, that was to help draw the neighborhood out to the pig dicks. It was to get a friendly clown face or whatever out there, get the kids out, if the kids come out, then the parents are going to follow. And they see we're out there to, not a threat, but to meal, have some fun, that kind of stuff. So yes, and obviously, they would do the same thing if we kicked that program back up.
Okay.
Yeah, and we don't want to forget about PALS, they were a big player. They helped, they helped us do that a lot. So, you know, PALS was a big part of that whole thing, it was really a team effort. Brenda didn't have a great thing, but...
She'd be glad to.
Glad to.
She paid the bills, though.
Anything?
I think that this partnership that we all have in the different divisions, working together and going to the neighborhoods, just demonstrates the commitment that we have to our community. And I'd like to say that this partnership that we put together, especially with Crime District, has really helped a lot. And we have ongoing classes, we have a bunch of classes for the new recruits from the police department. It just puts more eyes on the street, and I think the cookouts are a great idea, because, as I said before in previous meetings, when code enforcement or police show up with residents, it's typically they're not glad to see you. Our departments are different. I've been there, done that. But I think it's really good for them to realize that, hey, I'm here to help you, I'm here to help your community, I'm not the bad guy or the bad person, just really am interested in just maintaining the community.
The reason I want to go back, because it does tie into the new neighborhood, and a perfect example of that is, if you remember the neighborhood over there, I'll drop 1.1, right before you get to the column.
It's a great of this area.
You know, the boat storage place out there, can you hear that?
It's a bar.
We built that little park out there.
Still park.
Yeah, that thing. Boy, the presence they have out there, because, boy, the code enforcement, the police, the rioters out there, going there to have a little dance, the little dance that we had out there, they're just so good. They've taken that park over, and they help work with, I think, they help work keeping that park clean, weed-free and stuff like that. They get out there and do a lot of social stuff. So I think we need to keep that, not only thriving neighborhoods, but as we get into new neighborhoods, whether it's the same thing.
Build that from the beginning in those new neighborhoods.
And that kind of ties back to my concept of pocket parks and those kinds of things, because that's, that community is gelling around a feature.
There's some reason for them to come out and see one another and do things together.
I've heard much talk in our discussions so far, and saw it yesterday in our tour, and it's been mentioned a few times about community gardens. What's the feasibility of it?
Carol, you want to talk about that, about our community garden proposal? Hey, what, while, go ahead. We had a proposal for a community garden, and we, we kind of space for it, and it's something of interest to us, and I spoke already with TJ, and we've got resources for that, and we can certainly expound on that, so. Ready for that, okay? We actually, and I think they've been out there with us as well as looking at a possibility for that, but we actually own six acres, the city does, just east of our water treatment plant, and then our resource conservation center, and that's six acres right, it's adjacent to that, just east of that. We own that property, it'd be an ideal location for a community garden. And its accessibility, where there's a water line there, that we can provide water, there's trees, that we can preserve those trees, and still have a very good location to have a community garden. It would have shaded areas, and it would even be a good place for fruit trees, as well as other types of vegetable gardens.
And I think, you know, from a planning standpoint, nationally, there are really important success stories with community gardens in places like the South Bronx and in Philadelphia. I know that Dallas, when they started their community garden program, they had some issues with trying to figure out what they were trying to do and so forth. But once they got that done, I know that everyone that's there is oversubscribed, and there's really strong community support, and so certainly that's a really important way to bring people together.
It's very flat there, and it's, the soil is conducive for that, and it's been approximated where there's city staff around all the time to kind of look at that, and it's a wonderful location, and it also is the entryway to Lila, so it would tie right in with that.
With that green center piece, by extending the green.
And if you saw the community garden that they had, when we took the tour yesterday, how pristine that was, and that would be what we would envision for that. There's one just up the road, but it's, it's kind of a, you know, you sign up and keep yours, but I would envision one that would be part of our group, that would be as pristine as the one that we saw yesterday, very well kept. And we've had a lot of people ask us about that, and we do some of our meetings, when we have environmental meetings, and talk about those things. That's one of the top things everybody wants, is why doesn't Busfield have a community garden?
Is it possible to, at a smaller scale as well, like TJ's talking about pocket parks, that one that we saw yesterday didn't take up that much space?
No.
So, in having it more within the neighborhood, in a three-block walking distance, I mean, what's the feasibility of that? And another question is, sometimes they're not as, the city's not involved, they're not as well maintained, is that what I'm hearing?
Right.
So that would be, that would be one issue about not having them in different locations, is losing control of them, because we wouldn't be able, as a city, I wouldn't think we'd be able to maintain them all if they started popping up in smaller places.
Do you want to start with one, like your partner, and then just see what the other can do?
I mean, it could, it could be that you start a program and have sort of a partnership agreement, that somebody says, I want to start a community garden in my neighborhood, and you say, okay, here's what we expect that you all will do, and you're going to keep it up like this, and you're going to do whatever, and the city will help whatever. You know, once you, if you have a program set up like that, you know, I know in some places even, you know, in a neighborhood where there are code issues and a house is removed, you could put a garden temporarily, even on an individual site?
One thing we also thought about would be, would be conducive, is that if we actually had a community garden, that part of that would be, is that we could supply vegetables and produce, or our farmer's market in Old Town. That would be another thing that we actually were kicking around, is that, and some community gardens do that, a certain percentage goes back to either a media organization or something to that effect, but that would be a very good opportunity for us to provide produce for our farmer's market in Old Town as part of that project as well. So it's, it's an exciting project, and a lot of cities are doing that. We talked in our group, a lot of the young folks that are here, that's what they want, is, you know, it's important to us to do that.
We've got a couple of different deals going on there. There's the concept of the pocket park, but that is a lot more neighborhood engagement, because somebody's got to put water on the ass end, somebody's got to keep it maintained, whereas we've got something that's more sponsored by the city, it's a larger scale, so it might create some opportunities for small businesses, or CCA types of reciprocal arrangements, like we have currently with the Water District one. But that water issue, that baseline water and maintenance, kind of having the city oversee that, makes that a little bit different model than the pocket park. I like the pocket park idea, but that takes, that takes a little more work from that community, so it's interesting.
Well, this particular one that Carol is talking about, and that we've been exploring, is we have a, we have a company in town, a large company, not a small one, but they're interested in partnering with them. So they would be funding a part of it, so I think that's very exciting. They use natural products in their manufacturing, they're active organics, they're very large, a Berkshire Hathaway company, actually, that's doing cosmetics, and they use these natural products in their cosmetics, and they would like to make it a showcase for other companies to come and see this particular partnership. It's very exciting.
On the new neighborhoods, could we make that part of the homeowners association group?
Sure.
Where they would, if they come in, they have a area, they have a park, cars, and they have a garden that they're...
Did we see that development? We recently approved, had a garden.
But yeah, but in addition to just saying green space, you could put in something that either you're requiring, or you're encouraging, or you have incentives for, for part of that to be a garden.
TJ was talking about, you know, providing the water and some of the, keeping it, keeping clean, like you end up, the maintenance of that, actually, that is not very costly at all, because the participants that you have, they'll either lease their garden spaces, and the amount of water that that would take would not be costly at all, and the maintenance would be done primarily by the people either leasing or renting their spaces. Any maintenance the city would do would be very minimal, and it would not be that costly as well, so it'd be, it's great to actually, it'd be very good.
Carol, I have two questions for you. The first one is for the property you're talking about over in Lila. I'm speaking up, by the way.
Good job.
The, I'm talking to you, I'm talking to you. For that property that's over there by Lila, two questions. First one is kind of a lesser question. So you've got a water line going over there. Is it practical, is it feasible, would it be acceptable if they were instead given the flowing tubes on, or would people just freak out that they're...
Instead of giving the water?
Tree, tree waste.
Fluid.
Eat your cabbage.
Actually, we, we have an opportunity to provide tree transplant to Lila as well. There's a connection there for their wetland, and, you know, so that would be, there's a connection there. I don't know that it would be reasonable to expect that. Now, that would be the property right there next to Lila, and I don't, it'd be a little bit more involved to get the water over to this other space, but yes, we've already got an arrangement set up in Lila to water their wetlands.
Okay. My other question is, and this isn't just for that property, but also the pocket park concept. So I'm going to take my neighborhood as an example. If you put a pocket park, use a pocket park for a community garden in my neighborhood, it'll be wiped out in the day with coyotes and bobcats and whatnot. And there's certainly that same problem on my Lila, there's that problem in various places in the city. I didn't get a real good one that... I didn't get a real good look at this community garden here, but does it take a fair amount of protective fencing to?
It can, you can put up the old-fashioned, or I don't know what the real term is, I call chicken wire, and you can, you can make orders around those, or netting, and unless something is just determined to go over the top, that would deter a lot of it. I actually kind of live out there, I own a garden, and that's what I do, and it's very, it works.
Okay.
And if people are working that on a regular basis, then that deters a lot of wildlife if you would, but it can be a problem, they can also be managed very well.
Okay. Other questions? So we've noted on the chart in the back there, to note this idea of the community garden that ties into actually several of the big moves, that expanding the green, the thriving neighborhoods, and as well the sustainability when we're getting out to that. Anything else on the, on the thriving neighborhoods? Okay, let me skip ahead then, and we can move into the communications and marketing.
Maker space. I have, not at lunch, it was not at lunch, it was just to us. But it was related to a maker space, and TJ can probably explain that better than I can, but they talked about a community garden, actually, a parking lot, they'd be happy with having boxes, and being able to plant boxes, which is what they do in New York City, cities like that.
There's definitely, there's lots of options, there's lots of local businesses, local, that whole local thing ties into community gardens and community spaces like that, and in, in Europe, and in Europe, and Central, it's.
Hey, San Francisco, on bus stops, on the roof, we're growing shrubber.
Great, it's a DCTM, yeah.
That's one heck of a rest. I just want y'all to have a good harvest of shrubber.
Yeah, I'd like to see that, too.
They cut whiskey barrels in half, you turn them over, and you can grow strawberries like that.
I like the.
Yeah, that's right.
I'm a newspaper owner.
Okay, all right, so lots, lots of residents on the community gardens, and you're right, that does tie into the whole locally sourced food kind of activities, too.